If we have an audience of all of them. Uh, we are live.
Okay, so this is the planning board meeting for November first. I will start with a roll call Alden Clark.
Here.
Welcome back. Death of Lyle is not here, Barco.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers is not going to be here. Our retainer here, Shari Palmasano.
Present.
Jen Bluestein. No, and Boden Belkin is not going to be here. Okay. So we have no public hearings tonight. Uh, so the first item under general business is a request for final release of security for the reserve at Ashar Farm. And there was a request to continue to our next meeting on November fifteenth. Um, right, a motion to continue.
So Alden, your second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, and you do not need a roll call since we're all here, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any unanimous in favor? Okay, the second item is a request for minor modification at Donahue Court, um, twenty fifteen SPO two and twenty fifteen death oh one. Um, who is here to speak on this matter? Anyway, anyway.
It's the microphone?
That's a camera and a.
Okay.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Brown. I'm a local architect with an address at forty eight Market Street. With me tonight is John Gorman of Gorman Homes. John is the uh, property owner, builder and developer for this lot at twenty six Toppin's. So this, this lot is, has had a long history of nothing happening. And it's the owner, owners have changed a couple of times. Um, the architect has changed a couple of times, and this is the third and hopefully final uh, request uh, to, for a modification to this, to special permit. Uh, I was before this board, I think it was probably, you know, in twenty eighteen, I think it was maybe only one member.
It's here.
Yeah, one or two members on the uh, planning board that have been on it that long. Um, uh, so uh, we requested a minor modification, special permit in twenty eighteen, and subsequent to that in twenty nineteen, there was another uh, modification request, which wasn't um, uh, totally dissimilar to what we were trying to do in twenty eighteen. So I'll just walk you through this stuff very quickly. So this is, you know, this is our proposed site plan, and uh, what we're seeing here in red is the um, the outline of the twenty eighteen request. So what we're proposing now is, is nearly a thousand square feet smaller than that twenty eighteen request. In twenty eighteen, we also uh, had a detached garage in the lower left-hand corner. Uh, we're no longer proposing to do that. And also in twenty eighteen, as part of the project, there was an in-law apartment, uh, nearly a thousand square feet. Um, this plan sort of retains the, the best of what we had in twenty eighteen, some of the same concepts. It's sort of like a, a Dumbo, dumbbell shaped footprint. Uh, it's a house that has uh, frontage on both Donahue, Donahue Court and Toppin's. Meaning the side of the house that face, faces Toppin's looks like a front as well as uh, the side that faces Donahue. Uh, we had a circular driveway off of Donahue Court in twenty eighteen. This plan, plan has that same thing. And uh, the garage, the access to the property, uh, to the driving property in the back, uh, through the hammerhead. Uh, next slide please. So I'll just quickly walk you through. And what we have here, this is, these are the twenty eighteen drawings on the top. And on the bottom, this is what we're currently proposing. So the, the one thing that immediately jumps out to you is that this uh, request before you tonight is not nearly as long uh, as it was in twenty eighteen, or as big. Uh, changed the style of the house a little bit, still very, very traditional. Uh, changed the roof line. It's no longer a gambrel, but a more conventional, uh, conventional gable. And what you're seeing here is, is what I'm calling sort of the, the true front of the house. And this is the front that, that is facing uh, Donahue Court with the garage, three-car garage uh, off to the right there. Uh, next slide please. So this is uh, these are both elevations that face uh, Toppin's lane, you know, both of them. And I think this is a condition in the, of the uh, twenty fifteen special permit where uh, the front of the house facing Toppin's lane had to have some sort of entryway. And so both of these plans had that. And again, on the bottom, this is what you're going to see through, you know, from Toppin's lane, just looks like sort of, you know, very, very traditional uh, front. Uh, and off to the left there, I, I, uh, can't really see it, but um, this proposal before you tonight is uh, it's a little bit taller, but it's only, you know, about a little less than a foot taller than what we had in twenty eighteen. Next slide please. This is what I'm calling the back of the property, but this is uh, as you're facing the house from Toppin's, it's actually the left side. Again, not nearly as long, you know, as what we had in twenty eighteen. Garage off to the left there. And uh, next slide. Just coming full circle, you know, this is the garage side uh, facing um, you know, uphill towards, towards the hospital. And then again, in twenty eighteen, what you're seeing there was sort of the entrance to the in-law apartment, which we no longer have. So with that. I'm going to answer any questions?
Yes. So uh, are there any change in materials in the outside of the, of the building?
No, we're still planning to do more or less the same things, you know, kind of rot, rot resistant trim everywhere, uh, cedar sidewall shingles. That will either be painted or prefinished.
You have a turn question? I, I was reading uh, the agenda earlier and uh, there's a suggestion to uh, maybe have the neighbors chime in? Is that something that?
I talked to both. Yeah, so I talked to both of the butters. Twenty-eight, which is if you're facing twenty-six on the left.
Yeah.
And the uh, owner of four eight Donahue Court. Um, both of them had no concerns. I emailed them the, the plans and what the original one was, and then what the updated proposed one was. Neither had any concerns on it. So to the right is Anna Jakes.
Right.
And I didn't knock on their door, but I don't think that they would have any concern.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
The folks in the rear.
The, the folks on this side over here, twenty-eight, and then the folks on the rear.
Yes, exactly. Two folks that are most immediately impacted by this.
Is Donahue Court a private?
It's private.
Yeah, it was a special permit court, I believe.
Correct, yeah.
Does it, does it, doesn't provide any legal frontage to the hospital?
I know, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
One quick question. Is there, is there any change relative to the site, site grading? Or anything substantive there?
No, I believe it's the same as that.
Has changed, has the site changed at all?
So that, that site, yeah, Scott and Spato, if you, if you go from left to right on here, it kind of runs kind of quickly down. So it's higher in the back than it is in the front by about probably two to three feet. So you, you're really constrained by those grades. Um, particularly because you have the driveway coming off the rear of the court, so you have to deal with the entrance into the garage. And then hopefully can make the front corner work as well. So, I mean, that, you're really constrained by that two to three foot drop and where the entrance of the garage is. So there hasn't been any changes really from what the, the original was.
I, I, I recall this property. Had to look into it myself years ago, and uh, we had some significant drainage uh, requirements that I think are al- almost over-engineered.
Yeah, on the, on the approved subdivision.
So in twenty eighteen, we had hired Steve Sord to, to do a drainage plan, and I think in twenty eighteen, uh, twenty nineteen, that was substance, you know, modified. And uh, we didn't uh, hire him to do another plan this, this time around, but we still plan to incorporate some of those key aspects of his design.
Okay. We have two uh, options before us. We can consider the request minor and vote to approve it tonight, or we can consider it a major request required to be informed on that and followed by the public hearing. Um, I would take a motion on that.
But I make a motion as a minor modification.
I'd want to combine that with to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? No, 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 no.
Great, thank you very much.
Um, the next item on our agenda is a request for final release of security at twenty-one to twenty-seven Hancock Street slash, slash, what is it? And who is appearing?
I'm just showing, I'm just showing the, we, I think, you know, I don't know whether all members are familiar with the project generally, guys, because some, they're not a bit on the back there at the time. We're four units building these uh, two structures, right? Uh, we have a, a common shared driveway as a court sort of in between, and um, it's now complete, right?
Well done, yeah.
So can you um, make a presentation about this? Let us know what your, what is, what we, was required to be done and, and where you are with it?
Yeah, so we're approved to do two townhouses, lovely rifles, right?
Excuse me, just for the record, did you state your name for the, for the?
Jake Caswell.
Okay. She has it.
So it's actually two pieces of pro, two pieces of property that was shown as one. So we came in, left side of this two town, it's a townhouse, a townhouse, so it's actually two townhouses, four units. So we came through, that was an old paper road leather court. So came back through a leather court, put that in, there's two years to the right, so the right side is twenty-seven Hancock Street, so that's like, now it's twenty-seven Hancock and one leather court and left side is twenty-five Hancock and two leather court, the left side actually was an old, like, it was a commercial building, it was block, basically dumped down there. I don't know if you remember the dump, it was pretty bad. So came, they cleaned it up, the, the right side, twenty-seven Hancock, there was an existing older house. I actually had, we got in the side work, we found the foundation was bad, so I actually had to move it, put a foundation under it, put it back on and saved that unit. So, no, you come in now, it's all, it's all man-scape though, and um, yeah, that's it, I mean, I think it was pretty nice actually, but.
So um, I was confused about the dashed line between the two properties on the right. It looks like a property line, but it apparently is, I'm not sure what, what it's meant to, to show that. The line that cuts between the two units?
That's actually technically the bomb, that's actually property line between twenty-seven Hancock Street and one leather court.
So there is, I, I thought we only created two lots.
Well, yeah, it's condos, it's like. They're still on one lot. It's, it's a, uh, exclusive use area.
Yeah, it's, I'm going to break them up for legal reasons, we do condo.
So the, and do we have all of the, do we have recorded copies of, of the drainage easement and the, the tree easements and so forth?
Yeah, I was trying to recall when I came in here, um, whether we had those.
We did all that for the last meeting, I gave the charity.
Yeah.
And then we got all, all the sign-offs.
Trees all set.
Yeah, trees were all set. I had the plans, I had to plant up all that rail trail area. Jordy gave the okay on that. I basically was, the last meeting I had with you guys, I was like ninety-nine percent done, my closing's coming, and it just, you know.
I was, what I was most, I was concerned about the drain, the cross easement or drainage in the back. Um, because that was a big, a big issue.
Yep.
And I wasn't sure whether we actually had that taken care of. Here's, here's a cross easement here that I have. Here's a recorded easement, yeah, so um, just check through this, uh.
I think it was covering this back corner where it was.
Another court easement, um, there is a maintenance easement for trees. I have drainage easement, okay. So it's, it does seem to have been.
Because last time I was here, we were in, in between a meeting of, remember there was something going on with like, the trees. I had, I wanted to give the trees to the city.
Yeah.
City could have taken it until they said, we'll take the trees. So that's where that all got like, kind of a little, kind of a little bit of legal lease tied up in there.
Yeah, I see, I have a recorded plan, recorded easement plan there. Yes. Um, I have a question.
Great, Charlie. Before I forget, I actually have to recuse myself. I forgot that I was.
Okay.
Over and out.
I'm still closing.
And, and Alden is also.
I recuse myself as well.
So whatever, we have a, is that an issue?
Yeah, sounds like it.
But you don't, you only need a majority. I was present for it, actually.
Yeah, I think you're good with just the majority that you had, that's probably.
So you get three to hundred.
Yeah.
Assuming you're all in there.
Assuming there are, yeah.
A few more like that.
Jamie or Bob, you have any questions?
No.
In that case, I would accept a motion to grant the final release of security for leather court in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And two extensions.
Sorry, who's second as well?
Bob's second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, guys, thank you.
I was talking.
Good night. Hope we get on early, we'll see you coming.
Yeah.
See you guys.
See you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so um, as usual, we have the CPC representative on the agenda.
Um, yeah, I don't know, we, we might be, unless somebody wants to jump up now and vote here.
Are you, were you interested at one point?
Yeah, but you had mentioned that other new member.
Yes, she's not here, so.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm still willing to defer to her.
Well, um, why don't we?
Yeah, we can carry, uh, just a footnote to add more, more clearly, also that we can get a designation for the planning board. The way that our charter and ordinance is just set up, it's a little bit cumbersome, but in effect, even though you've been appointed to this particular board, you have to go through the city, even though you've been pulled from this membership and so on, but in person, you have to go through the city council. So we have to cycle this through the city council's docket, have it go to committee, whether or not you have to attend a little bit of committee meetings and so forth, just to kind of revisit being appointed as a liaison to another city board, even though you've already been appointed to this one. It's a little cumbersome and excessive process, in my opinion, for the CPC, the way that this works, but uh, but here to be the liaison, after you, we get confirmation here. Um, we then want to ship that right over to the city council so they can get that, um, because the CPC applications are being taken in, in uh, December, earlier than we used to do our cycle. Um, so we could take, the city council could take up the recommending, or that, sorry, the committee could take up recommendations earlier in the year, and then get that to city council before they do their usual budget cycle, which is in the spring. So uh, in essence, we want to, if we want to have a planning board rep on this CPC round, we need to do it soon, um, so.
If not, the STRUs are out of the way for the city council, things might move to, to there a little easier.
There's still the city appeal process.
What's it? Yeah, um, still be a second vote on that ordinance, but yeah.
So we, we're done, Brian. Do we need to get all the line before?
Yeah.
For this?
Uh, sorry.
Do we need to get all the number?
Um, I think it's still doable in the timeframe, in my view. It's just that I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally go past the next meeting.
Okay, well, what's, why are we resisting just?
Well, because Jen Bluestein had also indicated she might be interested.
Oh.
The chief hasn't been here in time, just like the outside of the meeting.
Okay. It's not, you know, it's not typically a heavy lift. It's usually what it boils down to is basically three meetings in the spring are really crucial. Where you attend, you hear the presentations, usually two nights, depending on how the application is, we have you bring it on two nights. You attend, you hear the presentation from the applicants, you review the materials that have been submitted online and opened out, the same ways you do with the applications here. And then you effectively provide a recommendation to the city council as to what to fund, and um, you know, and we provide the budgetary numbers and so forth, you know, large you have to work with. But in essence, you're providing an advisory recommendation to the city council, which then, if they go along with that, approve the appropriation itself. Um, sometimes there's a debate or deviation from there, but usually the city council, walking to its own questions, does the same thing as the CPC's recommended, so.
We'll carry that forward.
Nice, nice.
Correspondence regarding short-term rally, this is kind of moot at this point.
Somewhat, yeah. Well, we hope. We hope.
So the city council did move first meeting on a modified, modified um, item, so.
amended.
Modified, revised, uh, which is pretty tight. It is, it's strict as to parking and strict as to number of units you can own, and investor owners are sunsetted in three years.
Amortization of a very short three-year period, so there's not much of an investor sort of uh, component that, that.
Basically one licensing.
Cycle, yes, yeah.
Well, is it one licensing cycle or is it four years?
Sorry, uh.
Re-licensed.
Sorry, yeah, actually, because the licensing is actually by year, so you're right. It, it, the special permit would have been, that's right. Um, here, there's only one special permit cycle, but there's three license.
Uh, what's the cycle for this, right, for how long?
Sure, three years. Very soon. Yeah.
New annual registration, right?
Yep.
All right, and so what, what do you mean by the second vote?
They need to owe twice on, on, on origins.
It's kind of like to make sure that there weren't any second ques, there weren't any second guesses or questions, or.
I was just going to say that.
Um, we would be having another joint, we would be having a ninth or a tenth, just a public hearing on the matter. So that's one reason why, so, so some folks might be just, you know, it's good that we have something at this point we can maybe work with.
Okay, so that moves us onto discussion on planning zoning projects. Uh, do you want to give any updates on anything?
Um, I, I didn't necessarily want to add so much to this meeting. I just brief mentioned, um, the Story Avenue stuff where, um, uh, I think I've mentioned before, Minko has some interest in doing a project at the, the Hodge C side of the low street. Um, we're not exactly sure when that'll come in, I have to circle back to them, but um, they have been talking about bringing a project in on that side. Um, somewhere between, you know, let's say somewhere between like a um, eighty, a hundred units, maybe sort of the maximum side. Uh, but something, you know, sort of that range on that side of the street. And then uh, we've also had Richard Kaplan, who, and this is me representing, uh, who has the port plaza area, uh, who's interested, uh, as of just a day or two ago, are interested in doing a roughly two-hundred unit um, development or building, uh, when it came out is. So um, that is, has a relationship to the zoning discussion of the uh, study we'll be doing now with the Grammy God uh, for additional outside consulting services to help with our office bandwidth, is just um, to develop new zoning for the area that will change it from just, you know, all, all invented, you know, commercial uses to actually a mixed use, to more like a village note. Uh, we have some consistency with the type of stuff or forms that you might see in the downtown, where you have activation of first floor, residential above. Um, we might have some buildings that are just residential, but I think it's important uh, to have a mix of uses in that area. So one of the things we'll want to do with the zoning, I think, is to make sure that it's not just multifamily as a right, you know, for instance, like a four R, but actually, you know, some element uh, to maintain, not that I think they're necessarily uh, for the market be driven away as commercial uses, but we just want to make sure that it is actually a mixed-use district as opposed to the complex of housing units. Um, so it's more for us to discuss there, but there's a relationship there about whether or not we use that new district to take credit for ourselves with the MBTA communities guidelines. It's a different, you know, it's a different area of the city, but whether or not we want to use that. Um, um, the, the attorney, attorney meeting has run good, presented them saying that they can't make it work, uh, other than just doing ten percent of the units as affordable. And this is a much longer discussion. We're getting, going to do a little MBTA thing, but um, there's a very big difference between our, the way our four R district was set up under one statute, which um, allows us to go up to twenty-five percent, and we did that in large part because we knew that if you get twenty-five percent of the units on any particular project, like one Boston Way or three Boston Way, or even the, the one on Haley's, uh, the, all three of those projects, I mean, those are rentals. So because of the way that the state's regulations work, um, and this is all in the weeds, but um, if twenty-five percent of those are, are affordable and it's a rental building, which all these three are, we are getting credit on our subsidized housing inventory, which is the ten percent we try to reach to make sure we're in a sort of a safe harbor status. Um, we've been getting credit for all the units in each of the three of those buildings, even though technically only twenty-five percent of them are, quote, you know, restricted in terms of the pricing. Um, that's because they want to distinguish the rental units. However, uh, the new MBTA guidelines uh, for the state are very different. They actually go in the other direction and basically say, we're going to put a ceiling on how much, how high you can go, and they say you can't go higher than ten percent. You can argue with the state to go up to twenty percent, but you can never get to twenty-five percent. So there are a bunch of different parameters, and Rick and I have talked about this, we're going to have more discussion, um, you know, in the coming weeks and months. And we'll be laying out, you know, sort of a framework, a presentation to kind of go through what the requirements are. Um, you know, what we think some of our options are, looking at some maps, what the district boundaries might be, how we try to keep advantage, the advantage we have of our existing four R district. But we have basically a couple of zoning pieces that are going on simultaneously in different areas of the city. One is given the state's requirement around the train station, but they have a four R district. The other one is the Story Avenue area, putting aside, for instance, Martha West, where, you know, how, other, how, other changes we're making with, you know, zoning to do cleanup of things and then uh, some adjustments to the visit party, things like that. Uh, Story Avenue kind of re-envisioning that area. So we'll be having much more discussion about that, both informally, but then rolling into a more formal process, and we'll have, you know, some more renderings to look at, some discussions probably about overall city buildout as part of that too, you know, just recognizing um, we're targeting new growth, well, how much growth are we, you know, expecting in the future, you know, all that. Um, but in essence, we're looking to bring toward to the city council a zoning change for the Story Avenue area sometime in the spring, you know, let's say mid, late spring, um, of next year. Um, and uh, you know, if you have any questions about those things, I'll just know. But we'll be coming back with more presentation materials to walk through, you know, what the requirements are, what we're thinking, you know, our best opt, our options are uh, based on meeting the state's requirements, but also being appropriate for new reports, neighborhoods, and, you know, character.
I was, I was just going to say, I recall there's some sort of deadline that we had.
I was going to say that, so we, so we have, we have two deadlines.
Okay.
So the Story Avenue budget, we've got a deadline at June thirty.
Correct, that we have to submit that to the city council. We have to provide the deliverable essentially to the city council that we prepared, and buy that to the state for the great, or grant reimbursement. Doesn't necessarily assume that the council has adopted it, you know, by then, but we do, like Rick said, have to deliver that by that June time, because that's the deliverable and the grant, and that's the product we're producing essentially, you know, consistent with their end of the state level.
Then even more restrictive is our MBTA deadline, which is December thirty-first, and.
This year?
Oh, no. We haven't showed you that plan yet. Um, so I was kind of, I was, it seems like a long way away, but I was getting nervous, I was trying to edit that about it, because to get to December thirty-first, we have to get to the city, I'm going backwards from December thirty-first. The city council has to vote the zoning, which is likely going to be hard to explain to the public and possibly controversial. Before that, we have to get uh, to sign off from the state, right? Is that before we, on this city council vote?
What we want, it's, I, it's not necessarily that we need to get their approval, it's more that we want to get their pre-application to make sure that there are no questions before our council adopts it, that it is in compliance, which is the ninety day, they are giving themselves, if we submitted ninety days to do it, so we need to make sure we leave that.
Right, so, so let's assume there's a three months of city council review, and three months of state review, that takes us down to midsummer.
All right.
So we are really, our deadline for the MBTA zoning is almost the same as it is for Story Avenue. Uh, and so with that in mind, I didn't talk to you about this before, but uh, I'm thinking, you know, this is, we're coming into a busy season, we're trying to have additional meetings. But I think we should plan for an additional meeting in January. It would be a, uh, basically a workshop meeting to really dig into this stuff.
I can say my vacation right now.
You're booking a vacation right now?
Well, it's, uh, we go, we go to Utown over here, uh, very good Utown. Yeah.
Did we want to map out uh, any specific dates, just so we can think about, um, I know it's a little bit advanced, but just thinking about dates that work, um, now?
Why don't we, why don't we put that in our uh, staff memo for the next meeting?
For the fifteenth, okay.
And we'll discuss that.
Okay, yeah.
Because it doesn't look like we're going to have a lot of stuff on the agenda yet.
No, I think that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I think you had mentioned that it might be a good idea to get some images or ideas of what we, we'd like to see, even though may not jive with what they're thinking from a practical point of view, or a plan's point of view.
Yes.
But when, it'd be kind of neat if we.
Yeah, I think we, if we actually had a, a, and I could volunteer to do this, just uh, to put together kind of shared folder that we could look at stuff on.
That would be great, yeah.
Photos today, so.
Yeah, that'd be great, to be able to kind of like, like, Shrek kind of run through people's thoughts, visions of, you know, based on, there's a million of examples out there, but you know, this is the type of architecture, you know, uh, you know, streetscape, you know, et cetera.
Scam.
Yale, hi, you know, setbacks. I mean, we tried to have some basic design parameters in the four yard district, some of those we won't want to carry here, some of them we want to tweak or change. Um, so we need to think about things like that, both site uh, standards as well as building or architectural standards. I think that the scale and form are just as important over there as they are another as the city, and we need to make sure it's not just, you know, a five-story allowing street up. It's, you know, you got some sort of step back or articulation, things like that, so, you know, similar.
Are we thinking like, is there a maritime theme, or is there something that, do we have any say in this?
No, we, we certainly have designed, designs, sure, certainly. The, the issue with the MBTA is we have to allow multifamily as a right and a gross density of fifteen years.
Right, which, keep in mind, our four yard district really already does that as a right with a similar, you know, designer view process, still, still as a right use, but designer view. And depending on the developer you have, you know, how much back and forth the debate you have about how reasonable we are with, you know, of course, the design standards, but we're starting with a point of, you need to meet these design standards and then ask for waivers if you don't, you know, you can't meet those, and walk through that. We've had, there were a couple waivers granted on the, the Minko projects.
Yeah.
Uh, but they were, I would say reasonably responsive to our concerns and walking through those. I would want to see regardless of who's proposing things in the Story Avenue or, or other sites in the four yard district or, or MBTA, I would want to see similar, you know, development relationships where they're not just coming in saying, here's the bill, the building we want to put in there, you know, not going to, we, we want them to be responsive to our design standards despite the fact, like Rick says, that the state wants us to make it, you know, as a right, like our four yard district is. And we've been successful in the four yard district, I think thus far with that. Um, but also, we've also, I also think we've had, relatively speaking, a decent partner for the developer, the development of the three sites, they've been responsive, like, especially with the Haley's, so we spent a lot of time on that plaza, the commercial space, and they were adapting their plan to that, um, you know, uh, hopefully of the other parties who are working with them.
Is Minko thinking that they're going to go with Zachor, how he uses, and then use back area?
Um, they're in essence thinking about that front section there being used for the building, and then a bunch of backland, um, the old Woodman piece that was running as part of the forty B years ago. That that piece be um, essentially preserve his open space and possibly to made to the city. Um, but in either way, you know, preserved essentially, so very similar, I'd say, to a bunch of other things that have happened in that area. Um, but in either way, you know, preserved essentially. So very similar, I'd say, a bunch of other things that have happened in that area, which is good, which means the buildings are up by the street. Backland is preserved. It goes along with like the older woods and the tropic starland behind CBS and, you know, that larger complex of open space behind it. So we're clustering our development, you know, and. Not having it sprawl out. And so I, I think relatively speaking, it's a good thing, um, you know, in concept, it's, it's good where it's tracking, um.
Is he thinking, is he thinking retail at all and along with the parks?
He hasn't uh assumed that in there, um, and and he also expressed some concern in the forty yard district about making that viable space. We were pressing them to. You know, have a little bit higher ceiling for, uh, you know, in the first floor, put some little work units in there, try to make it so they could adapt itself over time to more active. Uses, even though they were saying we can't make that work. Um, I would want to see us press for more similar here, only in that I wouldn't want to see. You know, every developer coming in saying, well, the easiest thing for us is to do is residential. We just want to flop down a box, put the residential units in it, and then we don't have the active. You know, vibrancy that is a village, you know, node or center. We have basically the flip side of the commercial side of it. Now we're flipping completely the other end of the direction where it's just a bedroom sort of, you know, set of buildings. Um, tenement buildings or something, you know, so we want to have it be, I think, a combination of those things and whether or not we. Mandate that every building have that, I think, is less important than the fact that then somehow overall. We don't let every single site, every single building become just residential.
Well, I'm immediately thinking that we have so many residential units there, they're gonna need some sort of retail service as well. And you're taking Kmart, which I think is a great idea personally. I think it's a great idea to do something with that building and they're gonna put, you know, I guess a. Mid-rise residential. That's a lot of people in that area. I would, I would think that they need services.
Right.
You know, sure, you got market access, stuff through shop and whatever else, but uh, you know, this limited amount of retail.
Right. I would hope that the market kind of self, you know, forces it to be sort of self-sustaining and, and, right? Um, at the end of, no, at the end of the day, sometimes we like to think, all right, we, we still might want to have a stock gap at the end of the day to make sure that it doesn't get out of control, right? Because uh, we, at least I've seen like there are certain instances where it's just easier for developers and when they're, it's easier path to the money. To do the residential than it is to do the combination of things, right? And it adds more complexity and, you know, so. We might see people who say, I just want to be residential, but we might need to press that envelope if we see it going awry where it becomes a, you know.
Well, I think that's a mitigates, also potentially mitigates traffic, right?
So.
Right. Versus driving, unless you do, you know.
Right, stack parking, it's walk in the neighborhood, you don't have to drive somewhere.
Yeah, and it's, I still, it'll be a feeder to downtown, you know, heard, but I think that might be one way to press it.
Yeah. I don't. The other thing I. The other thing for new report, I think, given, you know, um, the importance we have with things like the national register district and, you know, um, dynamics for permitting in that area is. I think it also allows us to try to direct more of the growth or, you know, things that are happening to those areas, you know, in the future. Rather than having so many continual debates about infill, where it leaves, I want to say it leaves pressure, but allows some options for those locations. To focus on those things and just say, look, there are options for more units and development and so forth, but we can put those there. We don't necessarily have to keep piling everything into, um, and I'm using the national register district as just sort of a rough boundary, but. You know, that's a, you know, densely developed area already. There's a fair amount of, you know, sensitivity to the character and so forth. So. Uh, not to say that there shouldn't be ever any infill in that area, right? We still see, you know, sort of anything's happening, but it allows us to focus new growth in a more comprehensive way for those areas while also training them. And have them be more representative of new break for, you know.
Well, last comment, I won't repeat you guys, but uh, it, this, this is the planning board, right?
Yeah.
So, future, future thoughts, you know, there, there's been so much discussion about the lack of hotels and, you know, this. The strews or whatever you're, you know, calling the sacrament or that, that particular type of, um, investment property. Uh, I'm thinking at the same time, do we throw in there that there's the possibility to put a hotel in as part of the zoning in that, right? And then that way we don't have to revisit it and we're also potentially encouraging it. So maybe it's a, in other cities, I'm sure you guys are all familiar. They, they call them uh condo hotels, right? So they can actually have a combination of residential and hotels. So maybe you kill two birds with one stone by thinking about this as as part of the zoning, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it actually came up in a discussion we had when uh Lisa Mead, who's representing Kaplan, the port plaza area came in. Um, she was suggesting essentially that we, we sort of, you know, maybe start with the template of the four yard district. Now, I had already been looking at that because to me. It's a, it's something we've already had experience with. We have some designer view with that. Um, you know, we know sort of what that might be producing in some ways and we can then update standards and so forth, but it's essentially the format process for MBTA communities, for instance, that the state wants anyways. As a right residential takes the question of use on, you know, the equation and says, you know, how do you want it formed, perform to look? Um, and so, um, in the forty yard district, um, the, the initial uh thoughts that then you come back with is, oh, we didn't include the hotel in there. But in our forty yard district, we allow a hotel to happen in that district. And I also agree that we should allow that here. Um, in this district, um, I, I think there's a difference between a hotel and story avenue, very different than one in the downtown. Um, I don't know that the one in story avenue is quite as beneficial, same ones I made it because you don't want to have people visit there and just drive all their cars to downtown. And they're not there all the time, so they're not supporting all the business in the same way they would be if they're downtown. But um, we may still benefit from having that option there and I would want to include that or make it a use that's not allowed in that area. So I would assume that we'd want to, you know, again, for our future discussions, but I would want to include that as an allowed use in the district as well.
Great. Sorry, guys.
So right now we have, um. This hotel is a special for the, which is this district.
What's that?
Which is, which is.
Uh, B one is, yeah, B one, yeah.
Um.
Was that right? I was just, I, I have an excerpt of the news table here. I was noticing the hotel was a special permit we use, use in B two and B three, but I. Didn't record the ones.
This, this is from the business part, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's not, it's not out of question, right?
And there has been, there has, I don't know, I'll say like, there has been some interest in that area, you know, in hotel, um, from the, from the private sector, not just us, you know. I'm not telling you what John had in the city, but, you know, so we might see somebody come through, but, um, but.
Then of course, there's that uh seat where CJ's uh bus flying was, is that, is that public or is that?
Yeah, so that's actually under Mastio team. Um, we have, we have reached out. I have spoken to some folks in the state, but the mayor has reached out to some rubber reps in the state. And I don't know how long it'll take to mobilize something like that, but um, to, without necessarily getting rid of the transit component, maybe maintaining her. And there's been talk about maybe CJ, you know, might be, shouldn't cut it back, but to have to maintain, I think, that transit component, I would not want to remove that piece of it. Cause I think that's important, the regional, you know, sort of in Boston, I don't want to maintain that. But I think we could also potentially have some, a mix of things happening in there. It could be that you put a parking deck against the concrete wall and then you have some buildings that are sort of fronting and. You arrive on the ramps of the new, you know, on the new report, you say, oh, this is something, it might look like something that, you know, you're arriving somewhere. Um, and then, you know, as I said, which you can go into given parcel, but I think it might be possible to do more than just a service parking lot, while also keeping that transit component in a way. With the combination of the whole district. So what we're doing is we're considering that to be like a sub area that if the state decides one or the other to work with us to mobilize that in a way that. Isn't just strictly highway, you know, transit, um, that we could consider the housing piece or the mixed-use piece as part of that as well.
Which is essentially what happened with the train, the train station, right?
That's right, yeah.
Just supposed to.
They both.
Transportation land.
Right.
While, while the residential.
Right.
So the, I, I should just check in B one also is a special permit, hotels are special permit, so.
Yeah, it's just that uh the current district doesn't cover the whole area that we're, yeah, so.
So, okay, um, so I think for the next meeting, we should be, um, you know, as I say, you can share, share photos or examples of anything you want to put them into a shared folder.
So we think about like maybe sharing some, visualizing some of those about the theme or are we?
Well, just to, just to collect, just to collect something. No, just to start collecting.
Yeah.
So I can, it doesn't have to be that next meeting, but.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, start, start thinking, accumulating stuff, a folder and, um.
Okay.
And also start considering, we'll, we'll put in the, the staff memo, a reminder about, about dates for the January, um, separate meeting in January.
Yeah, you know, I'm wondering, and I don't have any preferences, I was done, I'm wondering like, if, if it's like a, I'm just saying, essentially, if it's like a Dropbox. Do we create a sub folder where each person could just automatically go there anytime they have something, just dump it in there?
Yeah, we have.
Uh, we're like, have an email, you know.
No, no, I see, yeah.
And that way, people can self-populate their own sub folder in Dropbox.
Or we could just have.
I don't care. Yeah, whatever works, uh, maybe it's one folder, oh, there's, but, yeah, okay.
Anything else on that? Anything else we want to say about?
Um, oh, sorry.
And you want to say what we think, don't you? About next, is it next meeting?
Yeah, uh, so we have a zoning here. We're now going to have on the fifteenth. Uh, this has been a little bit more, a little faster track, um. For various different reasons, but a long story short, the global site up on High Street, um, the old gas station site where there's been interest in getting rid of the so-called light. Um, it's been sitting there for a while and I say, look, you know, let's actually transition to residential. So. Uh, World was compelled to go back to Exxon, got their uh, a release of the restriction on residential, allowing it to happen. No sub, you know, no basements, obviously with the soil conditions, you know, liability, they just leave it there, you know, there was nothing detected, they just, for liability purposes, they're relieved down the chain. Wants to, you know, keep it that way. So no basements, but um basically putting what I think is a reasonable concept at this point, um, keep or take a few details, which is basically four units. Uh, two separate structures, uh, one being a primary, as you might expect on High Street, that whole quarter, a primary structure and, and essentially a second half, a second structure that's like a carriage house. So Scott Brown happens to be the architect working that. It's a pretty good plan, I think they're working with now. Um, there'll be a sort of accommodation presentation of me speaking to the zoning change piece of it in part and them speaking a little bit to the site plan. You know, a piece of what they're looking at for the project. Um, and the idea here in essence, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just glossing over the surface earlier, but. Uh, there's a lot of mechanics and and so forth, but the assumption here is that we are, we're essentially putting a development agreement in place first. So effectively the. Uh, mayor would be signing a development agreement with them to make sure that if the zoning change happens. They would be committed contractually essentially to submit something that fits in the envelope of this development agreement before they go to the, the board for approval. So here where we see what I think is a reasonably developed plan for um addressing the butter concerns, reducing, you know, having only one driveway curb cut on State Street. Having nothing on High Street, um, pulling that intersection, that driveway curb cut away from the intersection, you know. A lot of these things sort of working their way in there, then effectively that will provide a level of confidence for a zoning change that might otherwise be debated. Um, it's actually a zoning change would make the zoning of that parcel consistent with the other three quarters. So there's nothing unusual about that zoning change per se. Uh, it's actually makes sense, um, but it's just unusual because that um, High Street quarter, High Street residential district is created in recent years. Included or grabbed that parcel as well, and there isn't really a viable way of making that happen, you know, with the requirements of that district. So the idea is to say, look, it's not unreasonable to have this particular plan, the R three zoning district, you know, with the other three quarters, makes sense here and do the same. Treat the intersection essentially as a frame of that the same. And this would facilitate that project while also maintaining, you know, sort of a, a control on what's happening there. And I think would result in a much, much better outcome for that intersection, which is that as you're driving about State Street out of the downtown. You'd see a, a building or, you know, a building of the carriage house type of structure that feels like it, you know, I'm not saying it's always there. But it feels like it belongs there and it doesn't, you know, strike you as this gas station's out of place, you know. It feels like it's just part of that organic experience of coming up, you know, out of the downtown through High Street, you know, whether you're heading straight or down High Street or. Um, it feels like it belongs there and it's just part of the experience on High Street in general, but I think it's a good place and this is. Um, unless there's some, you know, major concern folks have, my hope is that, uh, all things being equal is, I think, because it's a reasonably good. Uh, project that, um, that we're able to, you know, quote-unquote expedite the approval of the zoning change to facilitate the. Uh, permitting that then has to happen such that the physical changes we wanted to see can actually happen in the next construction cycle. Uh, next, you know, spring, we could start to see some changes happening. The gas station comes down, residents can build, you know. Landscaping and all that happens, new sidewalks and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I'll give it to you to decide, you know, how you feel about the whole spectrum. But to me, it seems to be going in a good direction and that's why I feel like it would ready then for prime time to go into, you know, for consideration of the zoning change and the building would be very good, so.
Are you voting that you're expecting to vote that night?
That's up to you.
You might want to, okay, I, I think I might answer and accuse myself on that. I think Rob is representing the buyer.
I, uh, I don't know, I have to, I know for the, the attorney permitting is listening.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know who's representing her.
Okay, if it's not, like, all right, that's fine.
It won't be a issue because we don't need to.
That's what I'm wondering, okay, all right. And can we comment?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I'll be in there.
Um, there's been a lot of talk about this property, but I actually don't have like any, it was sort of outstanding questions based on what the plan is that they're working with, you know, and so. You know, it might have a little bit miscellaneous concern here. There are questions over, but to me, it's all kind of shaping up pretty well. And I don't have concerns myself, so unless folks, you know, I would be perfectly fine with the recommendation saying, you know, adopt the zoning change. And then recognizing we expect by the fifteenth to have that development agreement to point to. That says, you know, here's some constraints on the building, the architecture and the height, the sizing, you know, and so forth. And here's some constraint on the site that kind of point to a specific plan. The builders can know what to expect. We can all know what to expect. And to me, it's, it's, it's all.
I think, yeah, even though we will not need a permanent entity for this, I would like to have some visuals about the plan itself as part of that.
Yes, and I know that the, um, the overall site plan presented as part of that, uh, we had talked about the architecturals. I know that they are working on some of that. I don't know what they plan on including in the presentation for that, but I know that the development agreement itself, um, what the attorney has suggested there was, and, and I'm actually okay with myself. Based on where it ended up, but um, rather than having sort of detailed elevations that are pulled in the development agreement prior to the permitting before the board. They tried to via text, put some basic parameters on that, you know, in terms of the pipe that's allowed, style of the building, you know, and so forth. And I think that that's reasonably well enough to find, uh, that I'm comfortable enough that, that leaves, you know, defines a box enough that we don't have to leave it, you know, entirely to just the ZA. So I'm okay with that myself, but you'll have to decide to yourselves whether or not you build the site plan plus that text is sufficient versus wanting elevation.
I think as much as you could give.
Yeah.
It's helpful.
Yeah.
The ZDA would be the permit granting authority?
Correct. Uh, I think here what we would have in the presentation is, you know, a couple of maps showing the zoning change, the contact with the neighborhood. You know, we'll talk a little about the history of the past, you know, but then, um.
As a special permit.
Sorry, as a special permit, yes, for multifamily, yeah. And the, um, the site plan showing exactly, you know, how things will be laid out there, give or take, you know, if you wish, it's gonna be that. Uh, and then on the architectural, we'll probably see sort of the, we'll review the text of the development agreement and then you'll have some discussion if you want about, you know, from there, about whether or not you feel more specific. Even there, but in my view, it's sufficient to kind of put a box, you know, a, a acceptable box, so to speak, around it. Before it comes in, before the zoning change is adopted by the council, facilitate the permit process, which, and before the board itself gets the. Plan for the project, we've already defined enough of an envelope for that, that it can't be problematic, you know, is the idea. So, um, I'm, I'm good with that myself and I think we could see, if they have elevations, they can, you know, provide it by that, but we'll throw them up here, otherwise. We'll probably speak in more generality than Scott. I imagine that Scott might be able to bring some visual examples, even if it isn't be truly final elevations, because I'm sure they're still. Might be still tweaking that a little bit because obviously they're not doing the full, long work on that until they get the permitting and the load zones in place, but. Um, but he's already working and developing that and I think he may be able to show some visuals that, uh, do that a little further.
And you said something about Global had to get an agreement with Exon or?
Yeah, Exon, they put a, just like typical gas station, but a restriction, no residential ever. And. So it's kind of a contradiction because where our, our zoning only allows the residential, doesn't allow the commercial uses and it's a demanded use anyway. So we, we don't really want a traffic generated use that corner, really, I would say. Um, I think that's, it's a good thing for us not to have a traffic generated use of that intersection there. So. Um, so in order to facilitate a viable residential development, a couple of things had to happen. One, the zoning change is, the High Street zoning isn't really enough to. Allow a viable project there, um, if something works and we can talk about that, but it's just going back to dimensional requirements and things like that. The other piece of it is the fact that the deed restriction from Exon itself was prohibiting the residential.
Right.
And they were allowed to do that by saying, like, we did some testing, uh, to verify there aren't any, you know, should be any major constraint, you know, concerns here. And we'll put a deed restriction saying there's no basement so that, you know, to avoid even the possibility of there being some future issue, nobody's, you know, other than X meeting. Pretty terrible, you're not putting any habitable space below grade, um, so.
Just out of curiosity, are they less willing to release the deed restriction because they're concerned about future liability?
Yeah.
If somebody were to build on it and there's just.
Yes, okay, yeah. Actually, it's the attorneys with their hats saying. Yeah, it's all about liability, yeah.
I don't do it.
So, um, the other point, I'm not sure we've talked about this, the fact that it's only four units means that it's not a site.
Yes, sorry, Rick and I were talking to this earlier, yeah. So it's not a site that review that's being sent to the planning board. I, uh, you know, we have, we talked about some of the. I'm personally fine with it, generically speaking, where it is in part, um, part because of development agreement and the plan is in something locked in before and in scope before it gets the board anyway. Uh, and also because it's a discretionary type of permit, it isn't even, multifamily isn't allowed as a right, it's by type of permit. So you still have that discretionary review by the board. So if there's something that's problematic, they say, look, you got a continuance until you address our concerns. And, you know, they don't get the approval until then. Um, I'm not sure what, what those issues would be, you know, but we, you know, explore those at that point, but I feel like it's reasonably contained enough that. With that discretionary review and, you know, so forth, it's, it's, you know, shouldn't be, I don't know, a problem in any way.
What, what number of units would trigger?
Five.
It's five, okay.
Um, so I noticed this in the, in the demolition control and all of this, what does that do? Who gets involved in that, that is on board?
Uh, the, yeah, they would be the, uh, special permit granting authorities that we're having now. This is not a, um. A historical, like a garage, you know, the gas anyway is not a historical structure that people are going to be, I imagine. What's that?
They still have to approve the demolition?
Um, it's, I, I don't think that here we have that trigger because of the structure itself.
So it has to be you or?
Yeah, it's, I, this structure, I don't see triggering that threshold. So, um, in that case, we would essentially.
So you might be surprised.
Yeah, yeah. And again, even if that were the case, I mean, I would imagine that would be more formality. Uh, we can, you know, we'll check in the dates, but I, that would be just a formality, I would imagine, because I don't, I can't imagine who's going to argue to defend that structure being preserved.
The, yeah, lap of permitting authorities.
Yeah, yeah.
So that all within that region is started.
It's not the historic, it's across the street from the downtown overlay district, but it's in the demolition control. It's not the historic, it's across the street from the downtown overlay district, but it's in the demolition control. If we're, if we're across the street, we'd be looking at it.
Oh, okay.
Because it's on the south, the south side of the street. The ZDA looks at.
Pleasure, sorry, alright.
Right.
Okay.
Two quasi historic districts were created via zone where it's addressed areas that we weren't addressing via, we weren't having a local district, so we had to have some stop gaps. Um, the downtown water is a little bit more important just because, you know, in some ways, but the, um, downtown district was getting the planning board rightfully so because it has all a bunch of permitting overlapping there already. Doesn't, you know, it makes sense that the board is already doing a bunch of permitting there to have the same thing and not down somebody back between two of the boards. ZDA typically has residential, so they got the one that the decor is a used residential area, makes sense for them to have that one. Um, and so these historical components and character, particularly the downtown, the character sort of aspect of it, both of them provide some levels of protection for these, you know, air, key areas of the city, um, that weren't there before and provides while there were some, a bunch of structural permit embarrasses, things like that, uh, that are happening, it's a, it's an additional level of control to make sure we don't get something atrocious, right? So, yeah.
Anything else on that or anything?
Uh, no, thank you.
I've given over approval minutes.
Um, Kim mentioned, I hope you had something you were gonna speak to tonight, that, that she left the bar now.
We, we had.
I was getting to her, so I don't know where they're.
We had a meeting today about the pump house.
Yeah, and I, I pulled up the visual only because of her mention of it. I thought.
They're pulling together, uh, another bid package that, you know, leaders of, and uh, I think, you know, we've all seen fundamentally, uh, these elevations. Uh, a couple of things that came out of the discussion today. One is to change the roof from slate to, uh, a flat seam copper roof. Uh, just because of the complexity of a slate roof on, on a, you know, creating a hip roof. You know, a slate hip roof on a building that's roughly, you know, fourteen feet square. There's a lot of complexity to that roof that, that I don't think in the end is gonna look terrific. Uh, so Chuck Griffin proposed as, as a suitable, uh, you know, historic substitute, uh, a flat seam copper roof. Which we don't find it. I don't, I don't have an issue with that at all, uh, but because our agreement with them stipulated brick, real materials, slate roof. It were required to go through, uh, you know, a process just to, to approve that. Um, so that was one thing that we talked about today. Um, we talked about acoustics, uh, they've got a response relative to the louvers. And adding an acoustical plen on the backside of the louvers, so, so we, we don't have direct transmission of sound from the inside to the outside of louvers. Um, we talked about adding gasketting at the door so that the door is also a soundproof, uh, kind of construction. They are trying to push the building back between ten and twenty feet from, from where it was proposed when we saw it last. When he pushes it back behind the, kind of the first layer of trees. Uh, so it's a little bit more obscured than, than what they suggested previously. Um, it's tucked slightly into the hillside, not very much, but probably only a foot to two feet of great change, uh, that they will have to deal with, but, you know, it's pushed back, which will make the view from the street over the top of that down to the pond better. Uh, so I, I think that's a positive, but it's probably all we're gonna get in terms of relocating the building. Um, the last thing we talked about was simplifying the door detail, which has this, this X detail with a circle in the middle and we, we agreed that, that perhaps the doors could be a more traditional, uh, they'll be steel doors, but they, they could appear to be a more traditional style of rail panel door. And that they, they might spend some money putting more of a decorative screen in front of the louvers so that they don't look like a contemporary add-on to, um, the overall structure. So it's just, you know, a lot of detail.
So when does the, um, do we need to have a consultation with members of planning board? Not the full board, members of the planning board. In order to approve these changes, when do they need to have that approved?
She wanted to have a preliminary package together, I think in about a week.
Okay.
When it would happen.
So we, there are three areas where, um, they're approved by the planning director with consultation with members of the planning board designated by the chair at such time. And there are the exterior design, the materials, the exterior and the location. So all of these are going to be changed. So, um, I guess I would.
Yeah, my assumption is that if, if anything, sort of tracking that direction, that with that updated revised, you know, material, it would be approved, so to speak, or, you know, that, uh, whoever, you know, was, that we have that quick closure outside this.
Yes.
We, we can confirm that, it's just a little Bob just, you know, explained, and then that could be formally approved by me as a modification, original approval, uh, but for Rick, you know, and Bob, we've consulted with the board as a body, so obviously if you have any concerns, you're let us know, but.
But I would, I would definitely, Bob and Jamie, if you're, if you're willing to do this, to, to meet with the, look at the revised plans and share part of that one.
If we need to, uh, we dispatch them, we do, it's easy, you know, it's easier for us.
Right, but I think, yeah, I think, cause this is gonna be, you're just gonna be looking at the plans.
Yeah, it should be just confirming, unless you have some concerns a little while just outlined, hopefully it's just confirming that deed goes sufficiently.
Well, yeah, I think the only other issue we have after the discussion today was the, the actual brick that they wanted to propose. And everything we talked about was quieting the building down a little bit. Um, so it, it, I mean, it, it could get a little cartoonish if, if there's a lot of contrast in materials and, and it just might not fit very well. So they were very much in agreement that quieting all of the, you know, colors and materials down a little bit was a direction that they must support.
Okay, is that the red of the white band? That's partly, you were talking about that becoming a brick, a brick band that's.
I had suggested that the band that's at the top of the door.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that maybe that was just a projecting course of brick.
Yeah.
Uh, Chuck wants to keep that, it's going. Um, so, you know.
Okay. Um, I don't have a strong, you know, feeling about that.
Yeah, we talked about the heavy molding at, at the top, just underneath the, the roof. And, and I think I convinced them to make that brick rather than a white painted. Uh, they had an aluminum soffit that was a sort of not so great residential detail. So we, we've talked about alternatives that, that look more like big wood and has, you know, the three bending in it.
I like all the directions that you're.
Yeah. So it's a, you know, the sort of taking it down.
Yeah. Is it the delegating designer or is Chuck designing it?
It's, they're designing.
Okay, good.
Full contract document that said they're not going down and delegated design.
Oh, that's great. Well, that solves a lot of my concern. That's a huge change. Um, one thing I would give the three of your heads up was that when I last talked, because I only had a brief exchange about this and I knew you guys just recently had this conversation, but, um, my understanding, I don't know whether she's submitting an updated drawing versus a, uh, letter with sort of an explanation of each of these and very clearly spelled out. So obviously my preference is always to have like a plan, you know, call out and all calls went up, but, um, I, it was in her court, you know, the project manager to come back with a submission that we put to our online portal for a minor modification, uh, which the zoning administrator Jennifer then writes to me, right, for design off, which I can't do without doing a consultation, right? So, um, in essence, we'll have to discuss that piece of it as well as what we have to document the modification. So if you have concerns.
Ninety percent contract gotten.
Yeah.
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
But they're gonna accommodate these changes and we could look at a fairly complete.
Yeah, I would imagine the plan is even more detailed than this. If we had a drawn, single drawing sheet, very clearly spelled out with a couple of callouts and very simple to know, there's no dispute about, I, I prefer that over just a textbook of saying, all right, this is gonna be substituted for that. That's just it was harder for people to, you know.
Or tiny conceptual drawings like that. It sounds like, it sounds like it's in the right direction.
For, I mean, for the decision to make in a pre-standing building, which as you know, there were different opinions about. Um, if, if it is a pre-standing building, I think, I think we're headed to.
I agree, if there's too many, uh, choices, then there's, you're bound to have different opinions.
Yeah.
Shrink it down.
It was, it was disappointing for me to see all of the heavy equipment at the corner of the mall related to the playground.
Yeah, yeah.
All of that equipment.
Okay. So, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're pending Kim's, uh, providing that material to us. We'll reach out to just have a quick, you know, hopefully being in person, if we can, you know, zoom or we'll do that. Uh, but just to review that and make sure that everything does actually capture what Bob just said, has that sufficiently, you're all good with it.
Good, nice. Has Kim given you a summary of the meeting? Should I put together?
Your meeting you had? No, I only got a verbal, a quick verbal exchange with her. She summarized briefly some of the, you know, you talked about. And I'm sure that you might be wrenching it tonight so that we could then expedite the expectation that this follow.
Yeah, I certainly would mention it tonight.
Yeah.
Figure out a path forward.
Yeah, she's expected to submit that online, at which point we can confirm that the documentation, like you said, has, you know, sufficient, you know, information drawing to document that change.
You want me to send you and Rick an email, just kind of summarizing the points that we.
That would be great, man, because we could make sure there's nothing missing. Yeah, yeah, just, I don't wanna waste time with having to redo or then redo again. That'd be great. Okay. Now, thank you.
So I can circle back and look at the minutes.
I like that you did that, see what we forgot.
Yeah. I've already forgotten, so I went back. So we have, uh, minutes of October fourth, uh, to approve, uh, you were not present, so we will not be going in that. Um, I sent some, uh, edits, you know, a question uh, about one section, and you're gonna take care of that question, uh, just clarification. I gave it to any, were you looking at minutes while you were in Japan?
I, not while I was there, I did a quick look. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with what I saw. I did it.
Okay, nobody has anything else? I asked for a motion to approve the minutes of our two before.
So who?
Thank you. Um, any discussion? No discussion? All favored? Okay, good. Um, does anybody else have anything? Okay, yeah, in that case, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Let's go adjourn.
Okay. Okay, all favor. Thank you, everybody.
And I missed on three meetings in a row. Are there any?